To officially call the board meeting to order please at 7:47. Roll call.
Kreides.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Graves.
Here.
Blackman. Here. Lanier.
Here.
Liestra. Here. Corrigan.
Here. And the floor is present. We are returning to open session. There are no audience members who have signed up. So we will go next to superintendent's report.
Well, the summer program hiring is moving forward, just about fully staffed in each building, which is certainly a testament to the hard work of our principals, getting in with the summer stuff, family vacations, which teachers may not know, et cetera. But after a new student registration that day on Thursday, we have a much more closer review of our class, as to see if we made any adjustments. As of now, this school is in good shape. Do we have anyone on the overflow list right now, which is fantastic? Do you remember last year, this time, we probably had nine kids around the overflow? So that's it. That's it. Kudos for our business department, the hard work of the principals and administrative team to make effective recommendations for staffing. But after this Thursday, we'll have a better idea of our student enrollment. Next week, our administrators have two full days of retreats followed by a school approved planning day on the 24th. After that, we're hosting Silver Strong, as they begin a whole, thoughtful classroom training for our administrative team and for our teacher leaders, Hannah Parker. We're really looking forward to that training, and it's going to be the main focus of the team this year. As we've talked, we've addressed a number of the curricular concerns, a number of the assessment issues have been addressed as well, and now it's time to focus on the instructions. It's really a pre-laid stool that we kind of have to have that perspective when we think about student success. So if summer academy ramping up on the 25th, we'll bring our report to the board in August just to discuss how it went. And then again, after we have our IPDA mandate in the fall. And just a few more important things to share, because our next meeting is not until August 12th. In addition to this Thursday, August 5th is the new student registration day as well. August 7th, 8th, and 9th, our classes assigned to pickup days, Hannah Parker. The 10th is the back-to-school meeting period. Passes through today. That's actually Saturday, which is completely different from the last two years. That was a decision that was made by the village, not by us. And so we are working with Maria Woods, who's the president of the district PTO, to make sure that we have a positive response and put our best foot forward. On that day, our teacher's seat is actually the big game on August 12th. The 14th is Chocolate Walk, and the 15th is the first day of school. So we're both going to do it. It's kind of hard to believe, but that's in our report.
It's hard to believe, but it's one month from today. That has gone by way too fast. Any questions or comments? Okay, we will keep it moving. I made a promise that we would get out all the fun and sill out. I'll hold true to that. Meeting engagement committee.
Sure, one of the steps we're going to take moving forward with all of our board committees, we're mostly uploading, uploading the agenda, handing it to the board book, but also we will have all of our committees who have a special spot on the website, the committee, the date, any supporting documents, and then whatever we need to work with for that meeting. We focus on ways that we are communicating, where we can be at, you know, three main goals, communication, relationship development, district identity. So where do we want to improve? I think there's still some feedback on where do we need to bring the schools together or maybe separate. So we'll continue to work on that. We're really just trying to provide more information to parents that they have to go see plus, and kind of focus specifically on the pieces that they need to move forward. We'll continue our monthly newsletters. The E-News was kind of a big hit. Actually got a new parent to come up because of the way they were sharing information, which I think is really great. We talked about it, the server, the T161, we'll continue those. And then really additional ideas, senior breakfast, senior readers, bussing seniors in. What do I do for Ronald and Jim, things of that nature? As, actually, the meeting tomorrow, we're going to have the Hidden Gem organizers, because no one has satisfactorily responded to a couple of my questions about, you want teachers and administrators and parents out to support this run of the buildings, how do we expect them to get there by 6:00 in the morning before all the roads close? Or we can have a school that's not in Flossmore Fest, and how are they represented? Because if you remember, Hidden Gem, that there is a second place of choirs singing at Flossmore Fest, and all of our schools will be represented in that. And because of the time for now, the choirs won't have a chance to sing. So I want to make sure that we'll really have a chance to represent all of our kids, so that we have some answers.
Do we have, well, none of our choirs, do you have a chance to sing?
None of the choirs are pro-pro.
Do we have another venue of opportunity? This is something that, you know, I was calling to support.
And Flossmore Fest.
It's a Flossmore Fest.
One of my kids has been in the Western Haven Choir for a while, you know, when you're there. Is this, do you have another venue at least, or?
Hadn't thought about it. Hadn't made that for, according to everything that happened.
How is that a venue to the Flossmore Fest?
Because the Hidden Gem, that is the morning of Flossmore Fest.
Oh.
It finishes in downtown. They usually set up the stage and all those different pieces the night before. So now there's just not enough time continuing the end of the race and all of the afternoon and evening activities in downtown Flossmore Fest.
So is this something that the, as with the changing of the movie night, where there's, you know, where's the disconnect here in terms of, and, you know, to be frank, I was interested in, you know, the Hidden Gem, I was looking at the date, how it aligned with Flossmore Fest, I thought it was a different weekend.
Right.
And so I never even heard it until you mentioned it, that, but I would think that, you know, our village would be really interested in hearing our wonderful children singing choir as they do every year, you know, as opposed to this new thing popping up.
That's why I think it's a balance of responding to the pressure to generate the road. I can answer that on that one effectively. And what it would mean to say no.
Right.
I know you have to add, such and such, or?
Or a different day, you know, or then.
The reason it's on there is because we do Flossmore Fest, and it's a possible event.
Yeah.
To really say, well, families out, everyone can kind of enjoy the carnival, singing all these different pieces. It is unfortunate that our students can't. So our response is, what other opportunities can we create? So I'll hopefully have some more information. I'm coming.
When is the next, the next community engagement meeting?
We do not have a schedule for it.
I think it would be great, if possible, before we really get into the school year, if you, if the committee could decide on what activities, whether it's senior breakfast or whatever, all those things sooner rather than later, and get those on a calendar, and that whole calendar of community engagement events shows up in the community. I think.
We're on the same page. I'm glad we didn't, because we ended up back to school moving idea that we agreed on, and then I saw the flyer, right? And so we have to figure out what the disconnect is and help our partners understand that it takes two to tango. When you make these changes, right, it affects a number of people. So to Michelle's point, I think it would also help us nail down, no, these are the things, this is when we're hosting our big breakfast, this is when we're doing this. But we can also utilize the great relationships that we have at Hidden Gem, 153, and say, look, we're going to do these things, you want to hop on? Nope, you're good. Do you have any major conflicts? So that we're not trying to draw the same group of people.
Right.
You know, on the same wing. So we won't make that mistake.
So if that's possible, I think that would be great. A great thing to have, I think. That also just sends a message to the community, the idea of the bigger thing that we were trying to do versus.
Yeah, let's do this.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do this.
Finance committee. It's my favorite.
Just know.
Well, we did have finance committee. Unfortunately, I did not finish taking the notes. I was too busy working on it while we got it in front of you.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's really the culmination of the, it's still thank you. So, yeah, we talked a lot about just high level taxes, collections. You're going to hear a lot more about that in my presentation in August. We went through a couple of different things, including, you know, what a face funding looks like, and again, a lot of that stuff you're going to see in presentation in August. So this is kind of a document for you to cruise and look through on before the August presentation. We will be as a finance committee more time before that presentation to make sure that, you know, we're all got our eyes on the details crowd. And in the meantime, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to email me. I will be on vacation for one week, but other than that, I will be around to answer any questions.
This is really why we have a long break between now and then.
Right, so you're.
I said this. Although I was thinking, I think it's a little fair, because just being able to do a little.
I'm not complaining. It just feels a little.
I think I've got larger mind.
So you're trying to trick us.
I didn't just say we're going to do that topic.
Less stuff.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move, keep moving through the agenda. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items, including minutes of the regular board of ed meeting on May 28, 2019, executive session meeting, May 28, 2019, the regular board of ed meeting on June 10, 2019, an executive session meeting June 10, 2019 as well, payroll for the month of June, the amendment to the school staffing agreement, the crisis management stipend, the purchase of Five Map software, the original of the classroom at Heather Hill to speed, and the foyer requests.
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Blackman. Yes. Liestra. Yes. Lanier. Graves. Yes. Corrigan.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion? The personnel report is concluded. No, payroll, sorry. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Give a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Blackman. Yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Liestra. Yes. Kreides.
Yes.
Graves. Yes. Lanier. Corrigan.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Let's see, for the month of July, has Blackman reviewed the bills?
Yeah. So I looked at the bills, it's nothing exceptional. I mean, the school isn't exceptional, but it's nothing that stood out. So may I have a motion to approve the bills for the month of July? They have one note, 186,926,870.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Lanier. Graves. Yes. Liestra. Yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Blackman. Yes. Kreides.
Yes.
Corrigan. Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the 2019-2020 district consolidation plan?
So moved. Second.
Any question for comments?
There's a question, clarification. So this is not related to the building. This is something different. This is the, this is collaboration with AJ. So about the, is that those, are you going to already? Yeah. No. So this is, okay, all right, okay.
And then I have a question. So again, in general, what is this being streamlined? Like, I like the district part, but what is it, is this being streamlined again?
It's, it's IPDA, the special education grants, the regular flow-through of the preschool, and the title grant. We answer a lot of the same questions, and so it put it all together, and it's forcing that, we're encouraging that collaboration that we did in.
Any additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Liestra. Yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Lanier.
Yes.
Blackman. Yes. Kreides.
Yes.
Graves. Yes. Corrigan.
Yes, and the motion has passed. Now we are going to move through a short list of special needs. Junior financial report. Do you need to, anything to discuss on the junior financials?
You'll find in tab 11 that you'll see both last year's budget and the estimated end of year, so you're looking on, yeah, these are all the normal reports, but in tab 11, really quick, that we are, I think, the year with the surplus that will just shy of $300,000 on the operating side, plus then you have the construction that you did as a manager. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of the entire year right there.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Transportation update.
So we've been working pretty hard on this. What we discovered after a, well, we start to a summer school program, is that some of the things that we thought were occurring were not occurring. We were under the impression that Skyward was speaking to the bus company, Traversa, and putting bus stops in there. We were under the impression that there were set stops, that there was a lot of things that were happening that weren't. So we've kind of blown up the entire system. Now we start all of the breakdowns. We now have food walk boundaries that are determined within the Traversa software system. They are the same boundaries that have been there. No child is required to walk any longer than .8 miles and to have the option of purchase of transportation in the area. Don't want to walk. We're now putting standard bus stops throughout the entire district. So what happens is the software looks and assumes that there is a child living in every single residence in the district, and maps out stops. No child then would have to walk any more than .2 miles in most every point one. When you start looking at the map, and that's what we're processing, finishing up right now, almost, there's, there's stops, probably, you know, four, five homes from where people, where the students live. So we're finishing doing that. Then we're having, Skyward is going to be talking to Traversa nightly, it'll be dropping in all of our students and their addresses, so that any new students will be picked up the next day. Those addresses will automatically trigger what bus stop that they look to, and we'll be able to put new students onto a stop really very quickly, and then we'll be routing them. Our plan is then on class assignment pickup day, every parent will receive a letter about transportation with their child, a bus stop, and the time that their, the buses anticipated to be there. They'll be doing dry runs of the stops on the 12th, 13th, and 14th. We've also now been giving access to the software that allows us to actually watch the buses on the route, where the route is supposed to be going. So we're kind of cleaning up a lot of things, and we're automating, trying to make this, you know, make it work a little smarter rather than harder. And, well, we're, 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 we expect that we have much smoother structure this year than we have had in the past.
I think the difference here is truly luxury technology. Instead of historical understanding or knowledge, and a technical, scientific, thoughtful way. Kudos truly to Fran and her team, because if this was not easy work, not only getting summer school up and running, covering care and friendship, we'll double days, spend a lot of time, talking to parents, dealing with upset parents, rightfully so, but cautiously optimistic at this time of year, we're successful. Thank you.
So, thank you, Fran. Speaking of technology, what will happen to whatever the automated syst, or it wasn't automated, it was an app, right? We didn't notice it to let us know that it's, I felt like we've gone through periods where we would get alerts, and then we've gone through periods where we're not.
So the problem with the alert system is unless the driver lets face know that there are problems, they don't go send out an alert. The other problem then was if they were going like 10 minutes behind, they got stopped by a train, they would send out an alert, and then they'd be making up the time. So we started at the end of the year saying, look, unless it's 15 minutes late, we don't want alerts going out, because a lot of time the drivers are making up that time in the process. There's still nothing else we can do about it being automated at this point, that an alert going out, and it does come out from the page. What we have been doing, though, is watching on the software much closer the actual buses on the routes, and checking to make sure that they are running on time, and if they are not, we're actually making calls to the page, going, hey, what's going on with bus number eight? It doesn't look like it's, you know, running the way it should be. So we're being more proactive with them that way. The other thing that we're going to be doing this year is now all of our routes will also be hooked up to Skyward eBlast and phone blast, so that if we end up with a problem where we're not sure that every parent has signed up for the bus alerts, we will also be blasting out to the parents, hey, so you know this bus is running late, you know, and letting them know approximately, you know, where they should have their student at stop or expect them to call. So we're going to try and be a little more proactive about that, but unfortunately, it's still not sensitive enough, technological setup.
So I think it would be good to figure out, of course, sooner rather than later, what you plan to communicate out to parents about what that process is going to be, because, you know, I have the Invis Bus 36 route, and we have our own informal system that's used, and I think other neighborhoods do as well, but certainly at the end of the school year, we were also assuming that that system is what we were supposed to be relying on, and you just not get messages, and it's, you know, 20 minutes later, and we can find out if there's a sub, we've got, well, I mean, so whatever the method is going to be, it would be good to communicate that, so that we know what to expect.
One of the things on that, the letter that's going to have your bus route is, is going to have a whole lot more information than people are used to seeing. We're going to be putting out what the bus expectations are for the students, we're going to be putting what our plans are for the district. It's going to be a lot more information than what you were seeing from that.
I have a question. When you introduced such a matter about using this new software and having, in fact, it would give you more real-time access to those, I would like anticipating a lot better result than what I'm hearing and reading, in terms of actually being able to understand where buses, whether that bus is on time, not on time, all the issues that are related to the actual routes themselves, because that's where we're getting a lot of complaints. And so I guess one of the things I'm really trying to figure out is, do we have a person, individual group of people who are manning whatever the software is, so that as we actually see different complications or issues that arise, how are we actually effectively rectifying that situation, so that we can do something in real time, as opposed to waiting to be reactionary, which is what I thought the software could provide? Second, second part is more sort of the whole issue about the community. I do know that, again, we're going to have this issue, now we're going to have even more surprises. We've got, we've got the ramp going, circle, we've got children on the wrong side crossing, that's just, I would say.
I guess I'm just reading off. So the benefit of the software is that all that is systematically determined, right? So in the past, when we would do this by hand, we did have all those problems, frankly, and I think that led to a number of problems. You know, the difference between knowing that a bus is late and notify, so what we have to get to clear it up? How are we going to respond to it? Our response is only, hey, this bus is late. True, there's nothing that we can do at 7:45, the bus is waiting, it's late from here. So I think the steps we're taking to increase the communication, the use of the software instead of just one person to schedule all those routes would be a huge, uh, trans-leveraging the main driver, net page, and their full team, so to your point, we can have on and launch, late and launch, but we haven't. When people do this for a living, they're actually working on it, and we haven't had that in the past.
Right, and one of some of the things, like the crossing streets that they shouldn't have to cross, and those issues. So again, leveraging the power of the software, we have now programmed in, no child will cross, and we have all of these roads that they will not cross. So if a child lives on this side of, this side of Chicago Road, they're not going to be at a bus stop on the other side of Chicago Road, or they'll be dropped off on that stop on Chicago Road. But that is now built into this, into the software. I will tell you that after we finished, you know, fixing the summer school routes, I literally was driving every single solitary route, and we were on with both satellite, you know, really running those routes. Myself, my associate was, she was amazing. She was out there physically directing buses on, and seeing what was going on on the ground, and if we were having problems with especially one route, we were eyes on, we were body on the bus. And we will do the same thing for all the routes of the board that we got. We are having them do a physical dry run on the day before, which will have them actually stopping at every single route at the time they're supposed to, opening up the door and closing it, because then the system will register that they stopped there. We're going to be watching the path, we'll be looking at the reports and making sure that those drivers didn't get lost. There are areas in this, in this district that are very confusing. You know, there's, there's just, there's some areas where it's, it's just kind of crazy. But that's why I want them doing very good dry runs. But we are literally working with the router to make sure that those routes don't have students crossing roads that they're not supposed to be crossing, and all of those things.
Did you, and my last question, did you incorporate feedback with any of the parents who found negative results from this into what we're doing?
To say that I spoke to a few parents would be an understatement of the year. So, trust me, we've gotten a lot of feedback. We, the summer school was very enlightening. It was, it was very educational. I would not want to live that week over again, but it sure plugged me into everything that was corporate. So now we're.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Detail appraisal recommendation.
So we have gotten a appraisal, actually, it's like a thumbnail appraisal, if you will, on, on one of our properties over at Sheridan Creek Plaza. They have filed with the Cook County Board of Review for a reduction in market value. When we did our thumbnail appraisal, what we found was, not only was Cook County Assessor's assessment on, it was actually potentially to look. So we really want to quite this one pretty hard, and the high school has been, been working with us now. So what we want to do is get the full appraisal in order to submit it as inter-banners evidence at the Cook County, or at the Board of Review, to try and conduct the assessment on the property.
Any questions? Teacher meeting.
Yes, so this section of the PACT at 65.7 is the schedule that you see attached, as we do every year, in order to make up the time by providing either longer lunch periods during our improvement days, or earlier release times, in order to make sure that the time people will, are in as well as with the IPA. The schedule is attached, it's pretty kind of dry, it comes down to early release during, early early start of the season.
Any questions?
Yes, so does this mean that we've made a decision whether we're going to start the date earlier or later? I'm trying to re-just understand.
It's only for teachers, it does not apply for students.
Okay.
Students can still enter school and exit school at the same time. This is the teacher meetings time, to make sure that we have a consistent amount of time for our end as well as some other that have to.
Any else? Okay. Gifted educational date.
So we talked a little bit earlier in the year about doing, to have a date on where we are with our programming for gifted students. I just want to say in general, that term gifted students is really broad, it can be for students that are formally identified as gifted students, whether it's in district or outside of the district, as well as just off the power of supporting high teenage students in various different, various programs that we have available for them. So type of student support, early interventions we've done for quite some time, obviously differentiated instruction in all the classrooms, because we try to promote that as a starting point to support all students. Pull-up services at the elementary level, by our teachers, pull-ups students throughout the day, if you're reading in for math, you need enrichment or acceleration opportunities. Then, simple subject acceleration, whole grade level acceleration, our programs that we started last year, we continue this year, we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a little bit. Independent study in that advanced level and high school classes at the junior high level, additional things that we do. Additional things that we do, the accelerated weekend programs through Northwestern throughout the school year. Students really enjoy their preschool and middle classes. For weekends, we offer that competitive intense opportunity for our students to engage in without having to drive to Northwestern or enroll in a class that they take later in time. Again, just a list of elementary and junior high types of programming, programs that we provide. Always starting differentiation, giving the level of support in the classroom that we want to provide and then finding ways to build on that. We're always looking for new ways to engage our students who need challenge, need enrichment, and also need acceleration. A little bit of facts around our early entrance program. So early entrance is for students whose birth dates to kindergarten or first grade, followed before the second birthday prior cutoff time. So we do assessments, students come in and do assessments with their district psychologist to get a sense of their level of school readiness. We either recommend or do not recommend them for early entrance to kindergarten or first grade. Haven't had a first grade at a kindergarten in a while. It's mostly kindergarten, so we do a policy in place. Just some numbers, this year we had 13 students who were assessed for early entrance and then we had four that were accepted based on the assessment results and obviously nine that were not. Just to clarify, we had two students who were not assessed. They applied but were not assessed because their birth dates were, we had an internal cutoff that was been reversed for the students to turn five. So let's say their birth date was in February, so beyond that cutoff. To give you a sense of, we talked a little bit about what the demographics are for our early entrance students. Not so much demographics, but this just shows you where, what school the student would attend if they were accepted for early entrance. Seven students in Hills, two in Heather, one in Serena, two in Western Gavin that applied. Then our ACE program, ACEs are a pull-up program at the elementary level. Our ACE teacher supports students in reading and math enrichment and acceleration activities. Over the past few years, they've been following the, using resources from the College of William and Mary as well as the Project InQ program for math. Very first programs that allowed them to do a level of tailoring for students who are at various levels of achievement. They were able to cater to that program really to the needs of their groups. And we've really been focusing on providing enrichment and extension opportunities and really streamlining the process for ACEs. It has, over the years, I think, gotten better, not being so exclusive, being more inclusive to these are the needs of these students in this school, helping support those needs of the students in another school may be different. That's why we have some ACE initiatives. And then whole grade level, whole grade skipping. This is our second year doing this, a formal process that we require to do now per the policy. So the process involves students taking curriculum-based assessments. So we have the math and the LA assessment as well as the CODET exam, which gives us an idea of intellectual skill, what level the students are at. And requests can be created by parents occasionally. Can include students, if you make a request. I think I only had one student who formally said, hey, I want to sit at this grade level. It is available and probably the principals and teachers. We also will get the innovative math assessments and just other anecdotal data that we have from discussions with teachers and the principal, including the Iowa Acceleration Scale. So by the numbers, just to give you an idea for this year, number of students who were assessed for whole grade level acceleration. I think it's important to note that not every student who form is brought forward for whole grade level acceleration or for skipping is necessarily assessed for it because sometimes it's a point of clarification with the parents. Sometimes it's, I was thinking about this, but I'm uncertain. So before we go through the assessment process, which is a lot of testing, it really is. Try to have conversations with the families to make sure that it's the right thing to score.
Do we have any, I was just kinda thinking of this earlier in the presentation about an earlier parent component where, you know, parents have the information. Most of my experience growing up with this was a vague rumor that some kid had schizophrenia.
Yeah.
Or a vague, you know, some slight, we need my kids, that kid.
Sure.
And six years ago, we were changing the policy where a third of the kids were identified as gifted, which really, you know, didn't, we're not consistent with test scores or was more of, you know, not wanting to hurt people's feelings or something. So if we had something like that in place that's just already out there so we can, not necessarily say, well, you know, read the literature, but more proactively get parents to understand the needs of their kids, you know, much the same way that we also do this where kids might have other special needs that we can do.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we do send every year all families in the district to get the information about acceleration. I think that's really key versus sending it to a few parents or parents who may think would be interested just from an equity standpoint, it goes to everyone, how students would have someone at home that would be advocating for them along this way. And that's how we sort of reach that population that may be underserved when it comes to acceleration or students who may be flying under the radar but really could use acceleration and support. And then we, this year we held a parent meeting to explain all of this and it was really helpful also just for me to get, to hear what people's questions were. What were the points of clarification that needed to be made? And really stressing that this isn't, this is, to your point, this is a standard support for students that is provided. It's not a plug to get into, it's not something that we necessarily, in terms of the grade level skipping, it's not something that we want students to study for or prep for. It's something that needs to happen if they're showing from a data perspective and a social emotional perspective that it's the right thing to do.
Can you go back to the slide right before? Is, yeah, is there a social emotional assessment component that goes along with making the overall decision to allow students to skip grade?
Yeah, it's not so much an assessment, but we, as a team, we need, so for every student, the team would include the teachers, the ACE teacher, typically students who would put in a request or would have a request put in for grade level skipping. They're already seeing the ACE teacher, so they're working closely with that teacher, myself and the principal and anyone else who's involved with the student. We answer questions from the Iowa Acceleration Scale and that includes reflections about the student from a social emotional standpoint. So everything from, does the student have another student in their grade, assimilating, who they would potentially be in the same grade level with? That usually doesn't work well if they're accelerated. To, is this, does the student show signs of insecurity that skipping the grade level would bring out? So that's sort of how we get to the social emotional piece. It's again, not a formal assessment, but it does give us sort of a barometer of what we know about the student.
And to that point, I actually happen to know the family of one of the children who's skipping grade and about the social emotional. The parents want the child to do it. The child does not want to do it.
Yeah, sometimes that's the case. And we did gather that feedback in the form, we asked parents to tell us what the student feels about this and the teachers will talk to the student as well and get their perspective on it. And, you know, depending on the age of the student, the older students are usually more vocal about, yes, this is what I want to do, this feels right for me versus if kindergarten, I'm willing to do whatever. That is always back.
Yeah, that's what I said about that assessment. It's like, so, and I was gonna ask about tracking. So when you have a situation where you have a conflict between the parent and child and can we monitor and see that child's performance starts to decline? How do we address all of that?
Yeah, so this is our, this is only our second year of doing this process. I would like to continue this process, dig deeper into, we know just from a pulse check perspective, keeping in touch with the parents and the students and also from monitoring the data that the students who we have accelerated in terms of whole grade level skipping, they're doing really well. They have had some really great success stories over time. So we're really watching that to make sure that there are different ways of success for all students. That's sort of a case-by-case basis. If it starts to not go well, what do we do to contribute to ensure that we have the supports to make that happen?
How many whole level, whole grade acceleration students do we have out there?
Last year, off the top of my head, we had a few less. The process was fairly new. We had more than five less that were actually accepted. So this year we had five who were recommended for whole grade level acceleration and that's across the district, 15 that actually applied.
And of the five that were recommended, did they choose to do it?
They did, yeah. They will be accepted.
I have one more question, but I wanna allow you to finish here.
Okay, sure. And again, just next step, we need to continue to monitor this process. We need to continue to monitor all of our programs as we would like to this year really. That is from survey data from our parents and our students who have done whole grade level skipping. Just to get an idea of, you know, two years in, how we can go. And we touched basically the families, but heads and formalized feedback from them will help. Finding opportunities to utilize or seeing objective-based learning opportunities to create more enhanced experiences for all of our students and certainly our high-level students as well. And continue to look for and have our eye on the equity and the value of this process and making sure that it is attainable and that it's fair while also being sensitive to the individual needs of the students.
Good question, and this is what I presented. So there was a grandmother or woman, you know, came into the audience. Is this the area that she was discussing and did she fall into?
The early entrance.
Yeah, she was early entrance. And I think that's where we have to retain the right to say no because it does not serve the student well to accelerate them when it's inappropriate because what we're doing is just exacerbating handicaps in the room. And we have to, I think, see how those are viewed. As we get into year three, four, we build a better profile of those kids to where we're willing to take a risk on a student because we've seen kids with that profile moving forward and have success. But I think we can never betray the profile we've set forward because whether it's early entry kindergarten, it's kindergarten for a reason, right? And if we're allowing kids to be kindergarten, who aren't ready, we're doing them a disservice and we're doing normal kindergarten as a disservice because now we're diverting intervention resources. Take it to shouldn't be in kindergarten. Anyway, realistically, if you wait another 12 months, it'd be a permanent position to be successful. So, yeah, she was the bound for the, grabbed her most early entry, we follow her after.
Can you all understand why a parent would want to get into kindergarten?
Well, there's only reasons. One is acceleration. Two is because they were fully integrated for our program, realistically. And depending on their situation, we may not have fully integrated.
And there's one reason also that this state's deadline, I know it's probably a wrong word, but when a kindergarten starts, you know, that's.
September 1st.
Right. So it's always happens that coming.
We are kind of.
Right, but is it more students like, okay, there's supposed to be five by eight September 1st?
Right.
And so it's five, three days later. I mean, I would expect those, but are we seeing that, because they're like six months, eight months out of the time?
Yeah, not so much. It's the, our internal cutoff for when they could apply is November 1st. So we don't assess a student if their birthday is past November 1st.
They will give it two months, most of them.
So Karen, I would invite you to ask my mom that same question because she put me in school early and it is very much a difference. And I blame her every time, like, I'm not even supposed to be here now. So I did actually take a whole year off of my life.
I know two people, my wife was put in late December. She's always said that she always felt like she was behind. And my, her very good friend was, her birthday was like December 20th and she still was put in, she was like four for half a kindergarten. And she always, her parents are very driven and wanted, okay, we gotta get them earlier so they can graduate from graduate school earlier and making, you know, whatever it is.
I always told them, I don't know what you get to do earlier, even when you accelerate.
Right.
Nothing, nothing. You did everything soon.
Right, all the problems.
The best thing is, you know, I think about differentiation, I think teachers take a number of steps. Content level acceleration where we can do you in math or we can really run just probably what we need. I think that's helped take some of the stress off as Michelle talked about, some of the social emotional learning pieces. You can kind of dip our toes in the water with some younger kids who are ready for more challenging content that they're in their own classroom or just accelerating the one piece.
And one more thing that I could just add, as we're digging into our state assessment data and thinking of, so look at I R, we are taking a look at in terms of our students who are in the ACE program or are accelerated students, how do we make sure that they are getting to that ACES level? They're at that needs level, what's it going to take to really push them as a whole over that time?
Because that should be the baseline. Because we're really talking about the brass tacks. If you're accelerated, you need to be ACES. And if not, we need to figure out why. And if we have multiple data points that are showing that you're non, then we have to have a larger conversation about our content and instruction and all of these sort of things. But in order for us to keep moving across, we have to analyze that data just so we can forgive for our behavior.
Well, and I guess my other question about, particularly early kindergarten and I'll include first grade. I know there's been discussion of limiting some of the state testing and going more with the assessments. Will we still be able to kind of track those children going through to make sure they get the proper interventions so that actually our challenge will play?
Yeah, so limiting our local assessments and so, not the state, so eliminating like nap test, for example. You know, six hours of testing for a five-year-old kid over the course of the year. Are there other ways to get that information? I think all of our data points would say yes, and so now we actually have to do a job of expensive promoting to talk to the principals and say, okay, what are we gonna do if we take this away? How are we gonna, back to the beginning, so we can have conversations with parents, we can have conversations with colleagues and say, this is a pathway for this kid. Here's how I know it. This is what they demonstrated, here's how we're gonna measure it in another two months and go that route. So we can reduce our testing and not lose any of our leisure-like focus? Great, if we can, then we're still good.
And we have an always, I mean, I do remember very clearly when we started testing our kindergartners. My now seventh grader, he was his kindergarten year and we implemented that. And so we did that at the same time as moved, we often move to testing three times a year versus, I mean, so it was a lot. And I certainly, I think there are much more appropriate ways to assess a incoming five-year-old versus, you know, than putting kindles on during the HSA. My question or comment is, I think, I think those of us who've been in the district for a long time, I mean, I've seen our gifted program change so much over the past 10 years. It would be great to have a conversation in whether that's a part of SINTS or somewhere because I feel like we always have conversations about gifted over here, special ed right here. Like, I love to have a larger conversation about where the gifted program sits and maybe this is part of the strategic plan where it sits within our district and what are we trying to do and where do we wanna go with our gifted program? Because I don't feel like I can articulate that. And I think we've been in a very reactive mode and sort of this trial and error period over the past several years.
It feels like a program, if you have one, it sucks.
Right, I mean, but I completely appreciate the work that you have been doing to try and bring consistency and uniformity. and bring consistency and uniformity in. But I think now we're at a point where you have data, you have people dedicated to this work, where are we trying to go in our gifted program?
Yes.
Through our, on the K through five level, and really at our middle school level too, which I feel like has been really missing the attention that it's needed for a very, very long time. So I don't know where we will see what these, this is where your goal is, and maybe we will come out in the strategic plan.
Probably strategic plan, and only because, I mean, realistically, this, we're talking about one to three percent of our kids. But, the perspectives that come out in that conversation on education, whether it's assessment or acceleration, really have implications for everyone. If the board's going to be in a position to make larger, more long-term decisions, and you have to have a clear understanding of all the nuances of those programs, part of the first part of the strategic plan is information governing, and having a clear kind of data picture, which will mean a week of, oh, I don't know, typical, all the different data points with the parent. And so we'll make sure that this is part of our perspective as well, so that when we do finalize a strategic plan, we can look at everything in context.
So I, okay, so I have a couple of questions, and I want to just add to what you said as well. So we do have this ACE from K to five, and then six to eight is kind of fuzzy in my mind about it actually being anything remotely comprehensive. And then they skip and they go to high school, and they got AP and IB. And, and the way we program, the way we do our programs will impact a child if they want to have a career, say, in engineering, by the level of math that they can successfully take right in time they start HF. So I think it's important for us to think comprehensively what it looks like for a gifted child to travel through K to eight. But, yes, the socially emotional pieces, the academic pieces, just because I'm fearful that we are missing kids, and that we might be over representing kids, like, all of those different pieces of it. So that, I feel like at six to eight, it shifts and it's not happening. You can't travel from fifth to sixth and have the same thing, because there's no ACE at six to eight. So whatever we believe ACE is, it just stops.
Totally for convenience.
Right, except for convenience, right? And then my other question is, are there multiple entry points for ACE at K five now? Do we have?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, so it's, they, we, they look at it here.
Okay, okay. And then, kids now that are elected to do the grade, uh, half grade level, just the content, either the only of math, if they did, and they are in fifth grade, they're going into fifth grade now, and now it's appropriate for them to be at sixth grade or seventh grade, what are we doing with them this year?
Yeah, so we would, we have students who are in fifth grade, and not tons, but who would be taking sixth grade level math, and that's where we're willing to utilize our digital resources to validate, to teach our curriculum to them. So we need to do a distance level learning with them, we can have these teachers support with it, but that way they still get the same content, and we can physically.
Okay.
There are, I believe, five students in the district.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I, I'm priming safety to my phone, and then you can go hold up that sun out there. I'm sure we're going to steam roll through the next two, I know, right? Steam lab, okay, lessons learned.
Steam roll. Okay, so we heard from our youth teachers, from our elementary baby, and Serena Hills, that the first, Serena Hills, uh, STEAM was the first one that we had this past school year. Just heard their reflections, what worked, what didn't work. They did an amazing job rolling out both programs, and we feel really confident starting up the elementary labs for the remaining elementary schools, and then continuing with youth this year. Just a few things in terms of lessons learned. Again, with Serena being the pilot, or the first program, it's always challenging to be the only teacher doing something in the district, you know? That, what, the biggest thing that we've learned is that the STEAM labs really do require a teacher with a unique level of passion and commitment to doing it and giving it a shot, and really modeling the level of perseverance and level of grit that we want the students to have while working in the STEAM. So we did a wonderful job with that, as well as Tim at Parker. But we will continue to utilize the creative learning system program for the remaining elementary schools, and now we have a STEAM team. I'm putting lots of words. But we do have a full STEAM team, so we have a dedicated STEAM teacher at each elementary school, and they've been training this summer with creative learning systems, so they've really got to spend a lot of time together, and they're planning and collaborating already. So I think that is a huge step forward to just making sure that the program thrives. And really, just making sure that, STEAM team teacher?
Yes.
Yes. Really also just making sure that our students, their experience in the STEAM lab, that their, our schedules allow for them to have a consistent amount of time to start projects, to visit projects. If we don't have the, have the time for kids, whether it's kindergarten or a fifth grade student, to really grapple with a project, then the point of it is lost. It's not a traditional class where, here's what I've done with something, and then you come back the next day and start something new. So we tried to leave, our principals have done a great job of designing schedules to make sure that it allows for that. And then also continuing with professional development or employers, STEAM team will continue to work together throughout the year with creative learning systems, really to strengthen their collective knowledge. It's a position that I, they can, certainly expected to use the resources, but they can also be creative and add on to, and do the research, and find the projects that your kids are really interested in, and that's the license that they have to really make the program great. Another thing that came out of just the reflection was that while the lab space shared with the library is great, and we will continue that with our elementary schools, just having some expectations and parameters around use of that space, the STEAM lab is a classroom, and when it feels like a sort of communal shared space, with a teacher, it can be difficult to manage your class and to keep the students' attention. So just really talking about expectations for noise level, if you're passing through the lab, or, you know, keeping the door closed, and things like that, that seem really simple, but they do contribute to, we have the same expectations for classroom management for the STEAM lab as we do for any other classrooms.
Is there a plan to try to give some separation to that physical structure, to probably do that always issue?
Yeah, our other elementary schools, there's a little more separation, because there are shelves that sort of serve as natural dividers, we would have to take a look at, if we wanted to do any more extensive room dividing, we do the actual construction, the volume here in the room. But I don't think it will be as much of an issue with the other elementary schools. It's not as open.
Right, because there are, there are actually like temporary partitions that you guys put in place, like actually at the sound there specifically, because like a situation?
They could, but I have a much cheaper option. It's not utilizing the space of the building, right? And so, there was a classes co-parted to that STEAM lab, it could have been in its own classroom. And because of other decisions that were made, are we generating more conversations about the glass wall? We didn't go in that direction. And so we'll make sure that we're bringing the conversation with the principals about effectively utilizing the spaces of the building in order to prevent situations that get triggered. But all of those decisions, well, rather than the schools will come back here for a lengthy discussion before we make any recommendations for their future. So then we can have those conversations with the teachers as well, because they'll have an opportunity to get started. So I think if we, if we go back to that conversation with Andrea, now that she's with it, she may choose to organize her space a little bit differently. And so, the other STEAM teachers will have that chance, teach it, and then have a hand in, okay, yes, we really double carpet, and carpet on the walls is so loud, or I don't want any tables, just give me a few benches or a man. And so we'll make sure that they're involved in that, that the board's involved in too.
And just overall, our students, and Serena and Parker, really enjoyed both of these experiences we were expecting, just staying from our elementary schools and very excited for it. Each of our elementary schools, as well as Parker, will also post a STEAM night, that's just a standard event across the district, so we're really looking forward to that opportunity.
So you don't think they have a STEAM ring?
The STEAM, the vines of this.
It's almost all about that.
Soon it'll be a meme. We're not going to.
And Daniel, I think he was on the.
I'm sure there are no questions about the handle.
I know what you mean.
We will entertain one question on this student handbook, please.
Let's do roughly.
Oh, yeah, it's not a good, I know you guys notice.
I do, let me just give these to you.
If you're in my chair, if you have a larger comment, though.
I just, okay, I'll do, I'll do one kind of general comment, is when we use language like appropriate or good, I think we have to be careful, because to say that a student will be good or watch a performance appropriately, that can look really different depending on what the performance is. So if you have somebody doing a play, or a rapper, or classical music, stomping might be appropriate, and silence might be appropriate. So when you say appropriate, I feel like that's intended for kids that might have had as many more experiences with the variety of genres, or even walking in a hallway, or even the note, the adjectives that we use, we have to be really clear if we're going to say things like appropriately.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, but I do have.
Can we, can we take a little bit of capital? We'll send it back here, and then we'll keep one for.
And I can, you can add that one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Media discussed this, do we have a section in Harper, and I guess in, I didn't look for it, in a few five buildings, that addresses cell phone use explicitly?
Well, yes and no. Yes and no, and here's the battle that we fought. If you remember the handbook from two years ago, any non-perfect were listed as don'ts, and it didn't matter. So, if it's around cell phone usage in school, we can absolutely put it, that's likely to change whether or not we can use them, until we figure out different ways to engage kids, or different ways, teach them different ways to engage in different situations, whether it's, hey, when I go yell, drop, and text my mom, or I wonder, instead of focusing on this assignment, I'm going to check on YouTube. I think it's more about the expectations around person.
Right, and that expectation is a key phrase in the YouTube planning that's come up, and I even think that maybe all of my teaching experience comes down to, success is a reflection of cohesive expectations, whereas failure is an expression of anything else. And, you know, I mean, I even said this, I think, last year in a district dessert, you know, parents, please do not text your kids during school, because it does interrupt learning. Please do not call your kids, you know, I get parents, call, call their students and say, how much I have this price, like, in the middle of the class. I mean, this is, I hate to just say that, not.
I'll call your students.
So are you saying then that you, that perhaps the student handbook should at a minimum have like expectations on your grand cell phone?
Yes, it should be, and I mean, I have joked, I think my friends, about, I think that one of the most important things that you can do as a parent, if you want to keep being successful in school, is to not get the cell phone, because there is something that is so overwhelming and powerful, that is much more inherently interesting than learning about, you know, who won the battle for volleyball, or why X times, you know, two is four, you know, it's something, it's, you're never going to win with this if it's left out, and I think that you need to be explicit as possible. And yes, there needs to be a community expectation and understanding of, you are undermining not only your success for those, you know, a few seconds, but you're also undermining class, undermining the curriculum, it is a nightmare for getting the extent, because it's, you've broken momentum, it's distracted from exactly the purpose of what we're all here.
And I don't think it should stop at the high level, I think it needs to go to the K five buildings, because there's kindergartners coming to school with phones, so.
Is the multiplier of distraction?
Absolutely.
We will, as long as there's not an expectation that they don't have.
Right.
Because they just won't have, however, we can be very clear about what we expect, antithetically, to your point.
Yeah, circle will be, if they're out, like, they're visible, you know, that's a problem. If they're invisible, that's a problem. But it's, it's something that you can't define, so you can't say what's on the table. You can observe it if I observe that student had a cell phone on desk. Well, you know, in my classroom, there's no doubt, if I see it, that's an issue.
Okay, do you have no more questions on the student handbook? We're going to move on to thought exchange software.
Sure, raise back, this is, this is communication software, or maybe stakeholder engagement software. It's not a survey, it's not a poll anywhere, essentially. You ask questions, and you allow groups of people to interact with open-ended questions. As they answer their questions, the other participants have an opportunity to interact with those answers in a ranking system. And they, essentially, you have a question, you provide an answer, you also get to see answers, and then you get to rank those answers. What we're left with is the cream of the crop, or the issues that have resonated the most, we can search by group, we can search by content, et cetera. I've wanted this software for a long time, the price frankly is getting away. Twelve grand for one thought leader, essentially, which we would designate. It's $24,000 a year for a team of thought leaders, it opens up the licenses, I expressed our team, plus I thought that was, it's either one or unlimited, but here we are. As we talked about, our strategic planning process, the opportunity to engage a number of different stakeholders in a new way, this is mobile, on your phone, you can do it through your tablet, et cetera. It does use artificial intelligence in order to codify the information, generates its own ports, and will give us the most salient issues, and we're making decisions, especially as we talked tonight about the board and goals, about wanting to make sure that the board's values truly come out through that process, and making those decisions, taking what comes back from the community as well. This does make me think that we hope can, some evolving software numbers, so we'll bring those back with our budget, because this comes to be on the poll. I think it's absolutely worth it, $12,000 is steep for us, an opportunity to see how this would work. Other anticipated uses for this, one is future measurement of your strategic plan, we have work on the equity inclusion committee, that could absolutely be done. Our next phase of marketing for our community engagement committee could absolutely work for this. We're going to want to come back on our communication practices in the future. This has been used very effectively in addition to the five essentials at the building level, so teachers can go in and provide feedback, and then you can, that's measurable, it's a data point, come back six months, eight months, 12 months, administer a short survey, tell whether or not there's been growth. So, there are unlimited uses. I think it's good software, I talked to them about thought exchange fatigue, and they do recommend working with their, essentially, their relationship leaders on their end, to craft a plan, okay, how are you going to use this, what's it look like for the different groups, you know, and serve people to that, et cetera.
I'm, for whatever reason, I'm having a hard time envisioning this. Is it like a Google hangout, and a survey, and a Word all put together, like, I'm just trying to. Like I'm just trying to.
Yeah, you know, I liken it, I don't know if you know this. If you ever been on a website, Reddit, so you post, people post different things and other people vote. Then all of a sudden, the most interesting or quote-unquote important or potentially funny or whatever those are, the guys to the top, essentially that's what you have. And then what we have on the backend is all the data to go in there and say, okay, was this a fluke? How did this get so high? Oh, this is a representative group of stakeholders. That only have to do kids about this, but parents were having a kick out as well and teachers. So this is probably, oh, and community members without kids. Hmm, this one's probably good for us. Or maybe something that is in the middle that didn't rise all the way to the top and does have broad support. Maybe, maybe that's a place to start. So. Yes, it can be hard to envision, but I can also send out, I'm gonna do additional resources that are received this way from, from the menus.
Can you get like a 30%? How does this differ from anything else with users or tasks?
Typical surveys are just one way. You know, do you like the way that we communicate? Yes, why? Because. Right, this is the opportunity to say, oh, I didn't know that. Oh, I love it when this principal, or I love when principals send out some news letters. Oh, maybe that's what it is. But now you're like, yes, that does sound like a good opportunity for us. The only reason you had that idea is because you've interacted with someone else's answer. In a typical survey, it can not even come closely.
I've got just a couple. I kind of recognize that this is like doing pulse surveys and that you're really doing like real-time feedback. That's why I was there.
Sure.
But one of the, I feel one of the things I just wanted to ask in general is, is there another way that we could potentially kind of get some of the same information? And I just wanna offer an idea that, you know, might be worth that some time. Is it possible that we could actually maybe talk to HF and see if there's some students who actually would be willing to kind of do some of the same type of efforts? And allow them to potentially, you know, give presentations to the board, get credit for it at school, who are willing to kind of take this thing on and kind of work with this because this is really new school. This is really modern technology. This is really kind of using Google, this is using IT, this is using all the things that they're actually having to do. And maybe it'd be a good collaboration effort where not only not spend $12,000, but they're actually having a chance to kind of help give us community engagement piece, the time opened together.
If you ask my opinion, I would, I would tend to think not, only because if the software costs $12,000 a year, that's a lot of very expensive software engineers who came together to write it. There's probably a strong algorithm. If we wanted to leverage high school kids to, I guess I'm still not sure exactly what they would do. I don't, I would say that we don't have the bandwidth, we don't have the bandwidth to support. So if there's already a group of statisticians at HF who would be willing to contract with us to do it, absolutely. And I think that's why we're having a conversation about the software. Because we can survey monkey and we can do, you know, we can have focus groups, things of that nature.
It's just, and again, I guess I offered the 19, which I just had to talk about because there's a lot of free stuff out there already. We just started naming some. I know there are a lot of them out there.
Right.
And so with these kids potentially pulling in some behavioral aspects of it, some social aspects of it, some psychological aspect of it, it would give them a potential way to actually kind of do what they show, what they can do and get credit for it and could be a win-win.
It could be, we're not ready to manage an internship because true.
I, I think that that sounds, if my kid were involved in that, I would be really excited. Wow, it sounds terrific. From a board perspective, you know, hearing all this, the great stuff that this potentially does. And this is something that I encouraged Dana to, Chris Smith, to present to us after hearing Perry. Our CDC person who's, you know, helping us with their strategic planning really sold this as, if you had this, this would really help the process. There's other things that may sort of take it worse. But right now, this is, you know, the top of the pyramid in terms of what this does. And I think for our, looking at our ends in terms of what we, you know, how we wanna get community engagement, how we wanna get the data, how we can empower our district to find and use this tool in new ways to gather information. And, you know, I think that this, to me, sounds very, very enticing and appealing and did really address a lot of engagement issues that we've been, you know, struggling over here.
Do you answer the point of our service?
And so, you know, I, I, as you were describing it, that that sounds fantastic. In terms of our needs, I think we'd have to build that up and it would take a very long time. And we'd have to really create a program that would take years to really get to the point where I'm willing to pay this money to have them come in and make it work, you know, this year.
I would say they're not mutually exclusive. I think we can do both and absolutely reach out to bond with them. Because whether it's a kid who's in stats or a kid who's in comp sci, you know, maybe those are the kids that join our group because we're gonna have kids on the group anyway.
Right.
So maybe not only are they that have the student voices, but as we're having planning meetings or, hey, okay, there are some crushes, numbers, you wanna sit in with us and kind of have that conversation? Maybe that's a way. We don't have to create the whole structure, but we're still giving kids an opportunity.
And they may have a unique perspective that we don't have that would actually add to that.
So Dana, just one more question. So I've been in workshops where they say, get out your phone and here's a question, push A to B. And then, oh, look, all the people love A and want to be. I wanna understand the difference of this. Does this also allow you, will it code qualitative data? So I actually offer two to three sentences. So they use this artificial intelligence. Can it, can it, can it code qualitative?
So you have to. Oh.
So your comment. I just wanna know, otherwise, and then how is it different from the thing that I do and I push A to my phone?
No.
Not that.
What is the difference in saying?
Poll everything.
Yeah, any one of those.
Because what you have an opportunity to do is to provide an answer and they're typically not A, B, C, D answers. They're, they're open-ended questions. So you have to, you have to provide an answer. And then you have access to everyone else's answers like, oh, hey, these are the top 25 answers out of the other 800 people, comments that have come in. What the people.
Index list stuff.
Discussion, so you, you're not, it's not multiple choice. You are providing such a discussion. It uses machine learning to match answers so that everyone, you know, 25 people gave, I think, computers as a similar answer, so I'm gonna put that at the top. And you can read everyone's comments, but if the machine learning consists of trying to group answers, you see what's more popular or what's more relevant or what's better.
Can you control key terms? Do you have an opportunity to say if someone puts in the word smart, it means, it means a type of goal versus intelligence? Like do you have an opportunity to control that?
No control of people type.
Well, no, not what people type, but control how the computer interprets, yeah. Can you control, if this word passed up and everyone, but Cam meant smart, a type of goal, and I meant smart, intelligent, I don't want all those people to be in one spot. I wanna be able to tell the computer, when you see strategic, it means this.
You will not have that level of control over the machine learning on it. It wouldn't quite work that way. Okay, wait a minute. It does try to do what you're describing, but it's not in your control.
Interesting. So can we see examples?
Sure.
I love that.
It would, might also be helpful to have maybe some anecdotes from other districts.
Yeah, I would.
Things that is.
Got it.
That would be great.
Cool, but uh, and I'd like to see how, what if we have three, four children at one. Say.
You were gonna say our kids, ours, right? Our kids might be.
Well, we can do either. I, I don't know. That's one of the best they were. Are you asking me for a plan on how to involve kids in your strategic planning process? True.
Will you, will you?
Well, not as participants, but as planners. Right, because I, I'm trying to figure out what you're looking for on the student side because I don't know that I can plan for kids that don't attend our school this year.
Not as planners, I'm kind of more, again, so I'm trying to.
But there's one problem we're trying to solve, then we can figure out the best way to do that.
What I'm trying to solve is increasing the bandwidth from 161 to 233 when there are opportunities to do that such. And this is to be said as an opportunity.
Why?
Why?
All just asking for, sorry, I'm gonna click this one.
Only because I think we're trying to go ahead and close that gap between what 161 and 233 are doing with our students who prepare to go from one to the other. And so if we actually can have them actually kind of adapt to us and have a better thinking and also then potentially show us some ways in which we can give our children a better prepare if we're going to go up.
So I think I understand what you're saying. I don't know if this is what can be done. Because we made an assumption that the HF students, we had a similar situation with the library when it was, well, let's ask the kids, kind of monitor with the other kids. And so the kids are busy. And so as a parent, we need parents of HF students. I don't know because, and then we, and then you put in, they're being, it's gonna change their coursework. And so I don't think that we can ask the question, but I don't think that we can be guaranteed a response because today is not a district. So if it is like, I hear you, there's some things that we could collaborate on. I don't know if this is the best one for something that we're actually trying to get done on our side. Because we just don't have the time to let them come in and, you know, do what kids do.
David, are you wanting them to do the analytical part or just?
No, no.
I've been trying to understand too, what you're.
It's, it's, it's more that when I, when I first saw this, I saw an opportunity where we could actually potentially have them come in.
Feedback.
Yes, off ideas, feedback, suggestions on how we're supposed to do this thing in a way that they might see it with fresher eyes and that they're.
Doing, doing what then?
Hmm, doing what then? In other words, to, to, to possibly bring in surveys, which surveys might be best applicable.
Right, that's what you just said.
I, that's what I, I think so. Like it sounds like you want their analytical advice on how.
Advice, right, right. Not, not to do the analysis for a second, right?
I don't know if that best works in this situation. And I say that because I don't want a high school student. I value their thoughts and yes, most, most of them have come through our district. But I don't know that their services are best used in development strategic plan. Was that, did I say that wrong?
Well, I think the kids, the voice of the kids to create has to be involved, you know? I don't know that I would be able to recommend to the board putting the scientific data collection process around how you're going to determine the next five budget cycles into the hands of high schoolers or even us frankly, trying to figure out how to build an airplane that's going down one way in a way that's effective as opposed to buying the software or some other type of data collection piece that helps us get to good data, which helps you make incredibly solid decisions. Now the data has to be comprehensive and to, and to David's point, our commitment has been kids involved.
That sounds good.
And I, and I think what you've helped me do is maybe identify some different ways we can be able to involve kids in this process that, yeah, the participants, but also, you know, if they are, there's some sort of advisor kind of role. You know, it's not overarching, but just assisting.
Well, they are, yeah, they are alumni, they're stakeholders.
Okay, I, so let's start with this initial round of questions. I'll send you these pieces of information tomorrow. Take a look, there's a few videos too. I'm gonna generate more questions, send them individually. I'll collect for a couple days and push, we have a little time on this, but then I'll push them back. Thank you.
So just to be clear and to close this, which I never thought would generate this much conversation. I'm gonna say.
It's new, it's really new.
But it's kind of, it's two different things really, I think, that we are, that I'm hearing. One is, what is this? Like what does it look like?
Sure.
Right, so we need to see it. It's almost like, hmm, like with the, or like, you know, we need to see it and actually. Then the other piece is, is there a role for students beyond the board, just 161, with alumni that they could play in our strategic planning process, right? I mean, and I think the answer is yes, right? I mean, certainly, we, we were just talking about in the last strategic plan, how poorly written questions were, right, could it be, you know, for surely students who are taking stats class. Well, actually, I don't remember what you learn in stats classes in high school. But, you know, but there could be a role that they can play in helping us think about questions that would directly get at kids and students and things that resonate with them that maybe could be something that we, we're the consultant. So, so he wanted to use this beyond strategic plan, but he saw some value in community engagement committees and the other committees, and certainly, again, our alumni would be part of community engagement. So that could be another.
Yeah, absolutely. And then we also hire consultants to do this one, right? And so they will have generated the type of test of questions in the processes to get the initial feedback.
Right.
That we may not, we may want to be careful with testing.
Okay, well, let's see if we can generate as much discussion on the thought sport.
Somehow, I'm not entirely sure that's possible, but this represents the initial list. I can already see there are a few different ones. Obviously, strategic planning may cover Thought Exchange. It'll cover how we're going to engage the community on a number of different pieces. Facilities review gets into any number of things. So this isn't an exhaustive list, but these are the big rocks. The biggest being getting into the budget and school for the plans, strategic plan.
Okay, that, that's, sorry, a question.
Sure.
So what about facilities review include that update on COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
It's probably.
I saw that.
Medicaid reimbursement billing. So in Medicaid, we are able to collect reimbursement monies for social work services, speech and language services, evaluation, some level of transportation. And one of the things we've found is that we are collecting, our stats do a really nice job documenting what they can document given in the week, and, but it's, it's an arduous process. We ask them to log their service for every child so that we can see that they've actually provided that service and we're documentation for our IEPs. And then they have to log the service for the Medicaid student in the system. This would, this workload assist program is a, is a calendar-type program. It's based on a schedule. They build it in the beginning of the year like they built their schedule anyway. And then they will utilize it. It's a quick, easy process to just click it and they've seen the student. We really believe it will raise our revenue significantly. It will also, I'd say 50% of my, my desire to have this program is that it will raise our revenue and the other 50 will ease the burden on our staff. It will make that job easier so they can spend more time with the students. Any questions?
How much revenue do you project?
I, I, in my research, every district has raised their revenue, but I, I don't know. I believe we will, I believe we will raise enough revenue to pay off the system, the cost of the system for, in the second year. I don't know that we will do it this year, but I think it will be a significant raise. And I really, again, think it will be a tremendous time saver for our staff.
So in your memo of the board, you gave two client examples that I guess were provided by the vendor?
They were.
And so the first one says, line number one, prior workload assist, they had 193,000, I guess, driving in from the reimbursements.
Right.
And then it says in 2016, in their first year, how many reimbursements went down by 40,000? Then after that, they go up. Then after that, they go up. Did the vendor explain that? Is that like their best data that they're handing you? It just seems weird.
Well, I think, I think when you change, change a system, I think you have some, there are some complications. I can ask him for that, the analog of why that, he thought that happened. The other, the second example, they went up as well. I did talk to two other people other than these examples, and they said that, yeah, in our first year, we pretty much maintained, we didn't, we didn't see a huge increase, but year two, we did.
These other people are school districts?
They are all school districts, yes.
And the examples here are the school districts?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Aaron's Law Contract.
So again, Aaron's Law is a required presentation regarding safe touch for our students. We've had the same presenter, if the contract is approved, it will be his third year with the district. The staff, the staff that liked the presentations, the students who really respond to it, and the parents that have come to the parent session also seem to really enjoy, is a, it's a rough word to use for this, but appreciate the presentation. It is very much leveled for the age level of each of the students. And the response at Parker was very good as well.
And justification for the 3.4% increase?
He started his company, this company started last year. The first year, he worked for a different vendor. This is his product. He raised his rates $50 for each of his levels. And we got a $100 credit for being a past participant, so the increase would have been significantly higher. I mean, he's just trying to make a living, is my assumption. I asked him, he said he did raise them a little bit. We do benefit from a free parent night because we've been, because we transitioned with him from the first company to the second, to his company. And so that's a $250 saving that we've had for the both years.
Any else? Okay, Special Education 101 Nursing Contract.
We have students that are, have serious medical conditions. Mainly, they have, a lot of the students that fall in this category need suctioning. They have a trach, or they have excess fluid. It is, it falls under special education. They receive nursing services. And these students require a 101 nurse to make sure their medical needs are met so that they can attend class. We have, in the past, we have had nurses through DSCC, which is the Department of Specialized Care for Children, have come with the students. And that those nursing agencies have billed DSCC. We have not been involved in that. The new nursing agencies that are working with the DSCC cases are billing the school districts. Where I came from before, we were paying the nurses, very similar to this description. So we have two students in-house that require nursing services. One is a new student coming in, their child will start in August. And the parents were really good about sharing their contract agency with us, who's working on the DSCC case. We worked with that company. We were able to establish a contract with them. And I negotiated that contract then. The second agency, the parent has just switched agencies, and I don't have that information yet, but I'm working on getting it from the second agency.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. First reading is policies 4166, 657185, and 895.
Sure, so all these policies, the main content is not changing, only footnotes. But part of our conversation is to go through our policies, make sure that we have the most updated. And there's nothing substantive in these recommended changes, as we talked tonight. These are press, these are press policies, that's okay. So nothing substantive, and the final version goes to policy handbook. I'll set those up.
Thank you. Sorry, yes, that was at, after, or we can print that one. School logos.
Like, how school logos, it takes a while?
It wasn't early on. So they've got cats.
Just go to the hand. Just look at it.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Well, there's no report for it.
Okay, there is no report, but there were certainly a lot of questions about the logos. I personally, you know, I had a couple of questions or two. So we thought we would just put it under discussion to have people, you know, spend a few minutes talking about...
So the logos were updated. A couple of items were changed shading-wise on Heather Hill. Western Avenue added the claw marks underneath, filled in the nose, a little bit of shading on the head. I believe a couple of other small things. The Serene Hills star was a solid star, so we added some depth to that. Flossmark Hills changed the graphics on the name, and I think, you know, we kind of reworked the actual picture, correct?
Yeah, and it was like the stars versus dots.
Right. So...
Correct thoughts?
I have a little less.
You can go first.
All right, then I have, I...
So I, the purpose of the conversation, because I'm wondering if you're expecting me to go back and redo them.
Okay, so I, my understanding was that we were going to go through a process by which we have this incredible, beautiful logo here, came up with it, you know, this whole process. And I had thought that we were going to go through and do something similar with, or at least review that with our five schools, and specifically the grade schools. So I was, because at some point, we did see this as a discussion as these are coming up. And this might have been the meeting that I missed, that I sent in information, or you had a cable or something. But I guess in terms of, you know, my understanding of what we were doing initially, this was a little different. I will say, and I mentioned this, that, first of all, this could just be me. It could just be, oh, you know, Steve's not crazy about this. I guess I just, I don't know, I thought it would be more of a process. I would love it, if you're perfectly honest. People may feel completely different. I think it looks more like clip art, whereas, you know, we've been doing amazing things in this district. You know, even the physical things, that can really move things along. I don't know, I don't, again, this could just be me.
Do you have a graphic that shows the previous ones? Do you have a, you have a handy thing?
So I don't know, I guess it would surprise me that you would say that this is the part compared to the other...
Well, no, I mean, it's...
I think that I'm not saying that they were great either.
What I hear is that he likes the religious look, a little less cartoonish, more plural as the...
Well, and we did, just, I don't want you to think you're crazy. We did talk about how can we have the 161 logo extend to the other four so that they had a similar, had kind of like Flossmark Hills eagles. So at least that everything would be a circle, or that they were moving greater continuity. We didn't have that conversation.
The official relationship.
Yeah, we did, and then, but it'd just be greater continuity, so it was a circle, a circle, it was that, that.
And I think what's terrific about our district logo is it looks like owls. It looks like some, you know what I mean? It's not, it's something that's, you know, as a parent, they definitely think, wow, that's a great logo. Whereas, you know, again, it's, I don't know, it dismisses that, or, you know, grade schools. You know, I just, and I know they have changed, and they've been different things. I don't know, I guess I just think in terms of, if we're going to change them, you know, they should look more, you know, specific. Like, I really liked actually the wolf that was already at Western Avenue. Because I said it's Western Avenue Wolf, whereas this one, I think of, this could be a semi-pro hockey team, you know, somewhere. You know, or it doesn't necessarily have to be Western Avenue. Or, you know, I like the eagle to some degree, you know, because it was, okay, it's a Flossmark Hills eagle. Or at least, you know, there was, and I've seen several over the years, you know, and this is what Western Avenue wants, well, I guess, and that's what they want, you know, this is what everybody wants. They think this is great. Okay, that's fine, too. I'm just, I thought we were doing something different, that's why I'm trying to...
Does anyone else have comments or...
I don't. All these things that I'm about, but on my list of priorities that we need to work on, this is at least a thousand and nine hundred and eleven.
Right.
Lights still a little bit night here. I had, I personally agree with Mike Capel, the logo, because we like all of them. And we need to focus on substance.
I agree, I think they're fresh, new website, gay, new logos, they look good. I don't think fine. But I agree with Cam, like, this is like way above a model.
So, I would, yeah, so I would say, I agree with Steve. I am not happy. If they don't, they don't wow me, I think we could do an awful lot, we could do better. I think I'm more, um...
Oh, you did that correctly.
Okay, so...
So those are the ones.
Wow.
Did you just do that, or corny?
So these are the ones.
And so no doubt, you know, I think we would all agree that we need new logos for our schools. I think we assumed that there would be a process because we went through such a lengthy process with creating the logo for the district.
I think frankly, that's part of what scares us away. I don't know, I don't really, I don't... To Kim's point, we're talking about elementary school logos.
I understand.
We can, I don't know, yes, but as we talk about strategic planning, and we're working on the same time, and what's most important, if there are people who are upset, send them to my...
Well, but I think that there will always be something that will take precedent over whether or not we should debate. These are the models. Every single year, there will be something that people prioritize. But I don't want to discount the value of the logos and what we're trying to do in terms of creating consistency and coherence in sort of this, you know, one school, one district sort of continuity, right? So I don't want to discount that because we've got all these other higher priorities. So, I mean, yes, don't order a lot of t-shirts.
But I don't think that's, that's not fair to PTOs.
No, or, but not like...
But if we're going to come back and change this in a year, before we have Amy go through all the branding on our website that costs time and money, before we start ordering additional water bottles, before we start doing those things, we need to say, just don't do it. We're going to start a process to change these now because there's feedback on me, like, you can do that. I just need to know exactly what you're looking for so that I can move forward effectively because truly, when I started sharing this information in May, the only person that I heard back from was Steve. Again, as we've talked, it takes a number of people in order to generate direction and know and provide it. And so as we kept going down the process and we went into even multiple drafts, I didn't hear a thing.
Right, but I get that, but it was in the board update. So I think that maybe, some people may have thought that this was a conversation that, again, because of the process that we went through with the 161 logo. So, I mean, it is what it is. I don't think, I mean, we have time now to change these. I, and I do agree, I mean, how... Principals, these are your new logos.
Right, so on April 9, right, we talked, on April 11, actually, April 12, we got the principals, they offered the event. Amy Kent worked with the artist on that additional kind of revision. So all of this was shared with the board with the initial. So if you want to bring it back for a vote, that's fine. The information going to the board originally was, we're in the process of developing these.
So I just have a general, so I've never liked the logos when I came out here because it always seemed like the schools were in silos. And so that's a far bigger conversation. So for what's up there, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's an eagle, it's a hornet, I mean, it's an upgrade for what was there.
It's bad.
And so...
Hornet is bad.
But, like, all...
We're all bad.
But it doesn't have a connection between, so, you know, like, it's no consistency, but that's how it's, this is how it was when I moved out here. And so that's a whole different conversation. I'm not talking about the aesthetics. I'm talking like, I'm not a fan of an eagle and just a star. Like, how come they don't have an animal to, like, you know, and this is just a bigger question, you know, so that's insane. Like, I just don't think I...
See the path, or about to start walking in a community of 10,000 people, right? Because people, immediately, you can't change that logo. I went to school there in 1958.
No, it is, that's insane, so for what's there, it's fine. It's just my own personal, like, I've never liked these logos because it doesn't, it makes everybody look like they're separate. Like, they don't have any connection. Like, you know, so there's this, where there's a bear, and then there's a lion, you know, there's some, some form of a fluffy animal that all connects to one thing, but it is...
So do you want to, let's start with a larger question. Do you want, is there, are you open to changing the Flossmark Hills eagles to the Flossmark Hills fairies?
Right, but I think, but I think that's what we've been missing. I mean, it's the one we missed, that conversation that Nisha actually, because I think there, especially since we are getting ready to do a new strategic plan, I think we missed the opportunity to have a conversation about how we make sure our schools are aligned in every possible way.
Right, well, we can handle that. I just want to clear on the way you walk, because I'm hearing that it's artwork, and I'm also hearing that's how the schools are trying to get it. And so that's why, really, the first question is, are we open to changing the names of the logos?
So to answer that, changing the names, I would say no, because the exact reason you mentioned earlier that if you graduated from Serene Hills, you feel like you're the stars of the sky.
So the next question is, you want a community-wide process for people to offer or just feedback to our graphic designer?
Well, I would suggest that if we have a graphic designer, look at our thing we came up with and in a way that is somehow relates to that, use a view of the stars so that, I'm not going to touch any markers. Like, it's a star, so why couldn't it have like something around here? Or it's Heather Hill, it's already got something, doesn't necessarily have to have the vengeful hornet, unless it's people want the spike, you know? The wolf already has one that was around it, on the shirt that I purchased last year, you know? And this is great, it's a circle. You know, the specifics about the individual, you know, eagle, you know, whether it's the flying eagle or the eagle had, you know, that's, I'm not, you know, whatever, I think whatever. But in terms of, I think, in the least, where there's kind of like this continuity with the circle and they all sort of relate to each other, I think that's at least something that you could, you could kind of look at.
And I just sort of differ from that because I'm saying that even putting circles around it is still not going to come together, so for what's there, it's fine. Or, that's what I'm saying, I'm like, for what it is, it's fine. These things are never going to aesthetically connect to each other.
From what you said, I would say that, I would agree, because we're good, this is what we're all.
I am much, I'm really happy with the EOA and the math, you know, the group. I do not have a suffering or anything to say, no, the school's not opening until we get there, so...
Okay, so it is what it is, but I do think it is very important to go on record with what's all taken to everyone's name. And to me, it really was about the process because I want to, I want to make sure from here on out, not just in our... And to me, it really was about the process because I want to, I want to make sure from here on out, not just in our board update. I mean, I don't want to miss out on opportunities to have conversations about continuity as it relates to strategic planning.
Absolutely.
Because there's so many terrific things we've done so far, and I love the website, you know? But maybe even after we've gone through the process of strategic planning, the next year, you know, there might be.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure. I do appreciate all of you.
How many dangers?
This, this is what I think of all this.
And of course, I don't know what that means. So I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move from.
Okay, all, all left, they all have a favor, thank you.
Hi.
All of us, thank you. Meeting adjourned tonight, you're being lenient, thank you.